Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, November 5th, Election Day, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Four members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the October 1, 2019, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion. Mr. Youngblood has a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I'm missing some votes. The minutes are approved four to zero. Announcements for future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, December 3rd, at 12:30 PM, 6'4 Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their December 10th or January 14, 2020, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Thank you. Our first item, Z-19-06, Woodland Park. Mark Houston Ricketts of AES Consulting Engineers is requesting to rezone approximately 31.4 acres located at 409 McLean Street from neighborhood mixed-use conditional (NMUK) to urban residential (HI) URH in order to build 197 residential townhouse units. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed residential. The property is owned by Portsmouth Economic Development Authority and is further described as Tax Map 517, Parcel 2. Our staff coordinator is Julie Chopp. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Ricketts, and I'm the applicant on behalf of the Miller Group, who is the proposed developer of the property. And I have representatives from the Miller Group here that are, if you have any questions that they would need to answer for you, they're here to answer those. And then we also have the proposed builder, which is Ryan Holmes, and we have representatives from Ryan Holmes as well. So if you have any questions, we're there, more than happy to come up here and discuss it. As stated, this particular property, we're actually requesting a rezoning as well as a conditional use permit. In order to build the multifamily houses that we're proposing, you have to have a conditional use permit also, so we ask that those be heard simultaneously, if you will. Let's see if I can do this correctly. I'm hoping. Ha, there we go. As was stated in the informal briefing, the property is located at 409 McLean Street. That's what it's generally known as. It's located across from the Portsmouth campus of Tidewater Community College. Again, a view to the north, the property was formerly part of Fairwood Homes or Academy Park. As a matter of fact, my family's from Portsmouth, and when I was young, we actually lived in Academy Park, so I'm very familiar with this area. Still have family members who live in Portsmouth, over in Park Manor and other areas of the city, so I'm actually excited to be here for this. Again, across the street, you've got the parking lot for Tidewater Community College, and then you have the backside, some of the properties that are the backside of Newport, as well as there's a BMP that's adjacent to our development as well. As part of the research for this particular piece of property, we knew that there were wetlands located on the property, so the client had the wetlands identified. We had MAP Environmental go out, place flags throughout the area that identified the limits of the wetland area. Then we had our surveyors go out and locate those wetland flags to make sure that they were accurately delineated. This property and the wetlands located on the property have been discussed with the Army Corps of Engineers. We have not done the formal designation with the Army Corps of Engineers because with the layout, we wanted to make sure that the layout was acceptable because of the wetlands impacts. What we've done, too, with the layout is we've tried to limit the wetland impacts to less than one acre for a whole host of reasons. One, the Army Corps prefers that. Two, we want to leave it in its natural state as much as we possibly can. Again, the property fits in with the overall future land use in this particular area of the city as well. Again, the site itself shown, the use permit was also posted on the property to make sure that people were aware of what the proposed use was out here. Again, this is the use permit portion. Can I, is it okay to talk about the use permit portion as well? I know they'll be considered together, so I just want to make sure that that's correct. Again, the principal reason for the use permit is that, under the Portsmouth Code, it's required that a use permit be granted for the multi-use housing. This is the layout that's been developed for the project. As you can, the red line that you see on there is basically the limits of the wetlands. What we tried to do, everything north of that is the wetland area. Everything south where the layout is, is outside of it. The areas that you can see that are highlighted in pink or red, if you look in the middle there, I don't know if there's a pointer here. Is there a pointer here? Ah, yes, there is, as a matter of fact. In this area here, this area here, and this area up here are the limits of the wetlands impact that we have at this particular, at this particular time. The blue are the proposed BMPs at this time. The detailed engineering work obviously hasn't been done, but that's generally the concept on what we'd like to do is basically the flow. The flow, we've met with the city staff, the stormwater flows off of this site to the north and to the west, actually towards 264. So it will flow generally through that wetlands area. Public utilities are available, just to let you know. Water's available in McLean Street, sanitary sewer. Actually, this particular property and meeting with public utilities actually can flow in either direction, to the east or to the west. But anyway, this is the layout that we have for the 197 units. They're proposed as fee simple townhouses, so there will be public streets. The units that are located here along McLean Street will be rear-loaded, as you can see in the layout. They will have sidewalks to go out to tie into the sidewalk that's along McLean Street. Internal to the property, we have, ah, there we go. Internal to the property, we have these unit clusters that will also have sidewalks out from the unit to the sidewalk along the street, and they will be rear-loaded through a private alley in the backside here. This is one of those areas, and this is one of those areas. All the ones on this side of the property basically will be front-loaded. Their parking will be in the front of the units. Right now, in this layout, we have basically the units in principally five-unit clusters as well. There are three entrances. There's an entrance here, the main entrance here in the center, and then there's an entrance here to the north, or to the east side, I'm sorry. Newport, just for orientation purposes, Newport generally is here to the northeast, and this stormwater management facility was built partly to serve Newport as well as the widening of Greenwood Drive when that was undertaken several years ago. This is a rendering of one of the types of buildings. Again, you'll see that there are actually four units here. Ours are five-unit clusters, but we just wanted to provide you with a color rendering that shows basically the materials, the elevation of the front, the rear, and the two-side elevations of the units. Basically, these are the front-loaded elevations, the ones that were on the perimeter, except for McLean Street, that have the driveways in the front. That's basically a rendering looking at it from the front side, so that's what it would look like with the units there. You can see that you've got the various color siding, shutters, the different elements for the porches, and then the garage doors as well. And then various color schemes, there's the siding as well as the stone that's used on the various buildings, various units themselves. Then we also provided a rendering of the units that are the rear-loaded units, particularly the ones that are along McLean Street that we had talked about. So again, you can see the units themselves. You can see the various roof lines and the various elements that compose the units and the buildings themselves. And this is what it would look like from the front. Obviously, those would be rear-loaded, whether it be the ones along McLean Street or the ones that come off the private alleys, but this is what it would look like from the front with the sidewalks that would be coming out to McLean Street. We'd be standing in McLean Street on this particular layout. As far as the use permit is concerned, the staff report was sent to us on Friday. We got a chance to review it. We've reviewed the seven conditions. As far as the conditions are concerned, generally, the conditions are acceptable to us. However, Conditions 2 and 3 are a little bit restrictive as far as, they're very specific and very exact. Item number two, in fact, talks about the fence being similar to Newport. Our goal is to, while be complimentary, our goal is to have this be a different look to the neighborhood. You know, we want to put up a fence that's complimentary to the Newport fence, but not exactly the same. So we have, I have a proposal here that I'd be more than happy to provide for you. I don't know if I hand it to the secretary or if I hand it to you directly. Basically, what that is, is that's a request where we made a recommendation. I've just found in my experience, when you want to kind of massage a condition or something like that, just standing up here and talking about it, at the end of the day, you can kind of forget what we talked about and what the preference is. So I've made recommendations there for Items 2 and 3 to replace those. Let me grab, I gave you all those. So let me grab mine here and get up my reading glasses so I can actually read it. Basically, for Item Number 2, rather than what's on that board up there, it says, "A decorative neighborhood boundary fence which differentiates Woodland Park from the surrounding communities will be installed along the McLean Street right-of-way." And then Item Number 3, "In order to provide visual and aesthetic variety within the Woodland Park community, townhouse buildings situated next to or across the street from one another will reflect different color schemes for the siding and stone color." I have notes down there at the bottom, which basically state that for Condition Number 2, "The decorative perimeter fence along McLean Street is intended to create a sense of place and a separate identity from the surrounding communities." So again, we want to do something that's complimentary, but not exactly the Newport fence. And then for Number 3, "The colors, materials, and the building configurations, kind of the layout up and down the street, will be used to create a community that has flow, character, and variety throughout." The staff conditioned the way it's written, adjacent, diagonal across the street, it's difficult to do that as far as the actual unit itself. Again, we're willing to do with color, materials, arrangement of those kinds of things. So we respectfully submit that as a substitute for Items 2 and 3. The other items, 1 and 4 through 7, those conditions are acceptable as presented in the staff report. I believe, yes. That brings me to the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, I do have representatives from the Miller Group, as well as Ryan Holmes, who are happy to answer any specific detailed questions that you may have about that.
Commissioner Youngblood has a question?
Yes, ma'am. What is the, what are the sales prices of these going to be? Just general ballpark?
I believe, I know I put that in the report. Can you? $180,000 to $250,000?
$190,000 to $250,000?
$190,000 to $250,000, yes, sir.
Okay, good. Good, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And I think, kind of to go along with that, to kind of supplement that as well, one of the items that was talked about in the informal is the size ranges from 1,200 square feet to 2,400 square feet.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have, if once you talk, you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer for you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on Item Z-19-06. I do have one registered speaker. If you would come forward, you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. I usually have time to research and write up, but I didn't get the information on this until today, when I walked in the door and got the thing, the agenda. I am very concerned about this. Number one, you want to rezone it to be high-density urban residential. Our city is poverty-stricken. We've got apartments all over, townhouses, and here you want to change the use permit, I mean, the zoning, to put in 197 residential townhouses, units? It's going to cost between $190,000 and $200,000? How are the homeowners going to pay for this when we are poverty-stricken in this city? I am really concerned about the lack of communication to alert the citizens about this program. Sure, you've got that there. What about the other citizens with other annexes in the city? So I know what y'all are going to vote on, and I know how it's going to vote, but I'm going to tell you, we need to do some research on the need for this, and I want to see where the need is said. We need this. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si.
Yes, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address Z-19-06, you may come forward at this time, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Evans, and I live at 3160 Greenwood Drive, so I would be directly affected by this rezoning of the homes. I am not quite understanding why you would tear down townhomes that already exist to rebuild townhomes. So I would need someone to help me to understand, how is this rezoning something that already isn't existing and that's also cheaper for residents to buy? The homes that already exist there are cheaper than what they're trying to put there, and they are more affordable, as well as, how are you going to help those who have to move to be able to purchase something that's more affordable for themselves? So I need those questions to be answered.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am. The area that we're rezoning is vacant land. There's no, there are no buildings on that whatsoever now. Haven't been any buildings there for at least 20 years, maybe more. I've only been in the city for 20 years myself, and throughout the entire time I've been here, there've been, there's been nothing there. There was a development there, maybe up until 30 years ago, and it was torn down. I'm not sure what the, you know, what precipitated that, but right now, there's nothing on this property.
Nothing at all. So then, by them sending this letter out to me, it was just letting me know that something is going to be built in a property close to me?
Yes, ma'am. We're required by law to notify all adjacent property owners anytime something like this comes up, so that they can, they can express their concerns. I mean, if we were going to build a prison next door to your house, I'm sure that you'd want to know about it, and you'd want to be able to come here and say, gee, that's not what I want to do. So that's why you got that notice. It's not that we're going to tear anything down and displace anybody.
Got you.
And we have to rezone it in order to allow the building of these apartments or these townhouses, because the way it's zoned right now reflects an earlier application that I think was for a assisted living facility, and the two are, require different zoning.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Is there anyone else here who would like to address Z-19-06? Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed. We're in need of a motion.
Just for clarification, the proposed changes would be part of the use permit? Commissioners, we are in need of a motion for the rezoning of Z-19-06. Commissioner Thaxton?
I'll make a motion to approve Z-19-06. And the substitute conditions.
Those are part of the...
But that's part of this here.
Mr. Baldwin? Is it part of the use permit or the rezoning?
These conditions are only part of the use permit.
Okay. So this is without conditions?
Without the conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Thaxton. Do you have a motion?
I need a second.
I need a second? Commissioner Youngblood?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-19-06, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved four to zero. Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, we've already heard from our applicant, UP-19-16 is already presented, so we are prepared to move forward. If there is anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address UP-19-16, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed. We're in need of a motion.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am. I have one question for the planning staff. Did you get any written comments about this from any of the neighbors? I know you sent out notices to everybody. So, no, sir. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Does anyone else on the Planning Commission have any questions? Commissioner Coleman?
I have a question for our planning about the guidelines that they submitted for Condition Number 2 and 3. I would like for planning to approve those based on when they submit their site plan.
Well, this is the first we've seen of these proposed changes. I'll tell you, I've got some concerns with Number 2. That is, doesn't tell us anything. That's pretty much unenforceable as a condition. That fencing that we showed from Newport, as part of the Newport Design Guidelines, will run all the way down the rest of McLean, should that property be developed using the existing Newport project. So if someone were to want to take one little, you know, smaller section with an alternate fence, we'd want to be absolutely sure that it's compatible, even if it's not the exact same design. So we would like to, in fact, before it goes to City Council, we would like to see proposed designs for the fence as part of that condition that we would approve prior to going to City Council for their public hearing. I don't have any real concerns with the change on Number 3.
So if we put as part of our motion that planning, it had to have planning approval for 2, would that satisfy?
That would suffice. I would just like to state in your condition that the point is to ensure compatibility with any additional fencing that would be built along McLean as part of the Newport project.
Mr. Ricketts?
I just want to say that that's acceptable. We're more than happy, you know, we didn't, our goal was not to just give you a blank slate or whatever, chain link or anything like that. And we're more than happy to work with them. It's just, again, we want something that's a little bit different, complimentary. We've talked about, you know, it'll be aluminum or some, you know, some type of metal. It will have some brick columns, most more than likely. It just won't necessarily have that, the bottom brick footing throughout the entire area. But our goal is to make it, certainly make it complimentary. And having something approved before City Council, we're more than happy to do that. We'll present something specific at City Council either way, but we'll present it to the Planning Department ahead of time.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions, Commissioners? Okay. Ms. Coleman, you seem to be the one that can word this properly, but we do need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, with that being Number 2, that the fencing, the decorative perimeter fencing, be compatible with the existing fencing and design on adjacent property of Newport, with approval of the Planning Department, and as well as Condition Number 30.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Thaxton?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-19-16 with the proposed changes to the Conditions 2 and 3, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved four to zero. Our next item, CBE19-01, West Park View. Tracy Lovelace Transsons LLC requests a Chesapeake Bay ordinance exception for a single-family home deck addition gravel driveway and fill-in-the-resource-protection areas, RPA, seaward 50-foot buffer at 1718 Lucky Street. The property is zoned urban residential UR and contains a two-story, single-family home and detached garage located within the landward 50-foot RPA buffer. The parcel is designated for high-density, single-family development on the future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. The property is further described as Tax Map 62, Parcel 89. Our staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hi, I'm Tracy Lovelace. I have never done this before, so you're going to need to guide me. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Okay, so, whoops. This house is at the end of Lucky Street. There is currently no driveway. Parking down there is a nightmare. It is on the water. It's been there for over 100 years. It's been a neighborhood eyesore for about the past 20 years, and we love the neighborhood. We want to improve it. So in looking at what we could do to make this house marketable and still have it, you know, fit within the community, we felt that a driveway really was necessary. If you visit this area at all, you can see for yourselves how congested it is. People are constantly driving in my neighbor's yard to turn around. We felt that a deck overlooking the water would make it nicer for people. And the gas pack that is currently shown there, we're going to move around to the back so that it's not at the water view, and it's also out of the 50-foot seaward buffer. This is the external changes, and then, of course, we're going to renovate the interior as well, if we can get permission to do this. I've learned a lot about this process as we've gone through it. It's been quite educational, a little frustrating at times, but I think I have an understanding now of why I'm here and what it is that we're proposing to do, and why it's conditional. So what questions do you have for me?
I would just like to thank you for sticking with it. I know it is a lot of different agencies that you have to deal with.
It was.
And thank you. Stacy said you are very amenable to working with her and trying to fulfill all the requirements, so.
Yes.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am. I understand that the driveway you're proposing is going to be a ribbon driveway, which would be two strips of concrete, about, what, 36 inches each?
Either concrete or gravel. It's really going to depend on where our budget is when we get to that point.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's really adjacent to the side of the house?
It's... Well, the side of the house has a retaining wall built around it from the front and the side, so the driveway's gonna run next to the retaining wall.
Okay, good. That's what I understood. When I originally read the packet, it looked to me like you were possibly gonna try and run that driveway back to the garage, but that obviously isn't...
My original intentions was to do that, but when I started learning about the limitations on land disturbance, I saw that we couldn't do it.
Yes, ma'am. That would be, that'd be a real problem for, for you. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, one, one last question to the planning staff. Did you get any written comments from the neighbors? Okay, thank you.
I would just like to comment, this is an exception because you are encroaching into the fifty-foot seaward buffer. We haven't, I think Mr. Baldwin said it's been twenty thirteen since we've had anything like this, so.
Wow.
Just wanted to, it won't be the last, but I just wanted to kind of make that statement because we will be seeing it and hearing it again. Again, thank you for sticking with it. Again, and this is just one step in the process, you know, you still have site plan review, so that will take care of all the stormwater and other issues. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, if there are no more questions?
We need to open the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on C B E nineteen dash zero one. There's anyone here who would like to address this application? You may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. What I was wondering about this is request a Chesapeake Bay ordinance exception. Has the Chesapeake Bay folks been notified of this so that they can have a little bit of conversation about what their thoughts are besides the city's ideas? Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address C B E dash nineteen dash zero one? Appearing to be none. Mr. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed. Need a motion.
Commissioners, we're in need of a motion? Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve C B E dash nineteen dash zero one with conditions.
Commissioner Youngblood?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve C B E nineteen dash zero one, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved four to zero with conditions. Our next item, Z dash nineteen dash zero seven downtown. Jim Bento with Fairlead Integrated is requesting to rezone approximately twelve-point-five acres located at one seventy-six Lincoln Street and zero Gosport Road Row along the southern branch of the Elizabeth River for special district with conditions S D K to industrial with conditions I N K. The proposed use of the property is to expand the current boat and yacht repair business to a military waterfront services market to include government and military ships, and to manufacture, assemble, and preservation activities for structures supporting new-class ships at Huntington Ingalls Newport News. The future land use plan in the Comprehensive Plan, Build One Portsmouth, designated this property as a port facility. The property is also designated as Tax Map eleven, Parcels one thirty-three and one thirty-three point one. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the applicant or the representative for the, this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Bento, and this is Fred Pasquinn, he's the president of Fairlead Integrated. And I know this is deferred for our presentation today, so I was kind of surprised we were asked to come up.
But it's not a complaint.
No, no, not a complaint, but...
It's just your opportunity to comment, the public hearing will be held and deferred. The case will be deferred.
Okay, and we'll do our presentation on December the third for you. We have a nice presentation planned, and I think Mr. Pasquinn would like to say a few words about Fairlead.
Yeah, okay, thanks. My name's Fred Pasquinn, president of Fairlead Integrated. Our headquarters are here in Portsmouth at six fifty Chautauqua Avenue. We reached, recently purchased, purchased the assets of what was Ocean Marine and Yacht Center. We have proposed why we would like to rezone this location. This past Friday, we received word that there's five-point-five million dollars designated from Newport New Shipbuilding to provide additional industrial equipment to do what we would like to do. So, we'd like to exercise that, and this rezoning would allow us to do that. So, thanks for giving us the opportunity to do that, and we'll look forward to the hearing.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z dash nineteen dash zero seven. If there's anyone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, we are, we will leave the public hearing open until our next meeting in December. We are now in need of a motion.
Commissioners? Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am. I'll make a motion, we defer this until our December meeting.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to defer Z nineteen dash zero seven to our December Planning Commission meeting, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved four to zero to defer. Our next item, Z dash nineteen dash zero five, Churchland Daniel Heatwool of Ripley Heatwool Company is requesting to rezone approximately two acres located at thirty-one oh nine Tarineck Road from general mixed-use G M U to urban residential high U R H in order to build a forty-eight-unit multifamily apartment complex. The future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. The property is owned by William Copeland, and is further described as Tax Map eight fifteen parcel two. Staff coordinator, Julie Chau.
If I may jump in here, for both Z nineteen zero five and U P nineteen fifteen, which is a companion use permit, the applicant is not here, since staff was recommending deferral while he looks at revising his application. So, it won't be a staff, there will not be an applicant presentation. As we discussed during the work session, staff would recommend a thirty-day deferral for both items.
Okay. We open the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z nineteen dash zero five. If there's anyone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward. State your name and your address.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms. This Z nineteen oh five is in Churchland, and it's in, from what I gather, it's in the Ebony Heights neighborhood. And I talked with someone, a preacher at the new Community Temple Church, and what happened there, the, there's flooding in that area that's not being taken care of. So, the lady that lives on Dunkirk also has issues with flooding. And I'm seeing that there's concern about getting a use permit for high-density urban residential from a, just residential. And I don't understand the thinking of people who want to build something in Portsmouth without having it elevated and, and the ditches and pipes and stormwater drainage being addressed first before you're planning to do all this building and approving a building. Apartment complexes where people will have to live in a watery environment that will cause mosquitoes and diseases. So, y'all do what you automatically do anyway, is do what you want to do, and you don't think about the needs of the people. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si. I would like to clarify, I do not, I do not believe this is in the Ebony Heights neighborhood. It's off of Tarineck Road, over where the Churchland High School used to be, right next to another apartment complex. And all stormwater issues will be addressed during the site plan review process. This is merely a land use approval.
Thank you. There appear to be no other speakers for this item. We are in need of a motion.
Commissioner Youngblood?
I'd like to combine these two and defer Z nineteen zero five and U P nineteen fifteen until December, just to speed up the process.
We can do it.
Thank you. May I have a second? Commissioner Coleman?
I'd like to second.
We have a motion and a second, and incidentally, the public hearing, the public hearing is remaining open. We have a motion and a second to defer Z nineteen dash zero five and U P dash nineteen dash fifteen, and we will be voting electronically. You abstain? Mr. Youngblood, did you abstain? This, this item, this item is deferred by vote four to zero to the December the third Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. There are enough for the, further items for the agenda. Mr. Baldwin?
No, I have nothing. I just, since we will not see you until after Thanksgiving, I'd like to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and we will see you back in December.
Thank you, sir. You too. All right, with that, this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.